This conference will now be recorded.
It's just gonna be recorded.
Yep, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, if not, you don't like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Bart?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Because nobody's here yet from Colback, can we move on to the mayor's report?
Yeah, I think we just come back, yeah.
Okay.
I sent Paul a text asking if someone from his team was coming.
Okay. So we're gonna go right to the mayor's report. Second meeting of every month, we announce a candidate for citizen of the month. And it just so happened to be Counselor Norman's turn this month. So I'll turn it over to Counselor Norman.
Yes, I picked Claude the Rich. And he's done a lot of work on the benches for the community. I didn't realize that he's been doing so much work to those benches. It's one of the things that they look good, but they take a lot of maintenance. And he seems to be doing one or two each year to keep up on them, to keep a rotation of refinishing them and whatnot. He's been doing it for 10 years or so. And it just takes time to do them. Said the cedar ones are holding up better than the fir, which is pretty common in some of the places where they're put, where they don't get as much weather, hold up better. They have to work on them as much. So yeah, he'll take them, sand them down, put three coats of finish on them, and makes them look pretty good. And as well as doing benches, he also does a lot of volunteer, the senior citizens, helping them get stuff moved, putting some shelves in there. And his next part-time job at the library, doing shelves and helping them keep it organized. So I present this to Claude. I'll come down and give it to you, Claude. Somebody got their camera to get the fancy picture?
Thomas is gonna get away.
And thank you very much, Claude, and all the good service you do, keeping all the things looking nice. A lot of the other things you do for the community, too.
Continue doing this for a while.
We appreciate it.
I want to retire at 85.
It'll never happen.
Okay, we have a few more years, we can plan on effect, keep it all in good shape. Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Claude.
Thank you.
Always good to see you around town. Okay, moving on to council committee meeting reports. I had one, I attended the senior board meeting last week. Pretty run-of-the-mill meeting, actually, but there was a couple of things brought up. And one, I noticed in the Josette's report about the crack in the counter. And I think that's gonna be addressed, and it looks like in your report. So again, I was nominated, elected on the board to fill the final position there. So I have a notebook now that I can take to every meeting, and it's kind of good. That's about all I had to report on that. They are doing meals in the planning hall now, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. You still have to make an appointment. But there's been a lot of participation there, which is good to get back to having meals. They have quite a group of seniors with a exercise class that's being led, I believe, on Wednesdays. Pretty good participation there, and they really enjoy that. That's all I have to report on the senior board. Again, the baffles are installed in the food bank now and seem to make a pretty good difference as they have in the kitchen. So I know that they really appreciate it, the noise is less. I don't know what the decimal level is down.
I think it's down to 50 now.
Fifty? Oh, that's pretty good.
Yeah, it was at 73.8.
Yeah. Baffles made quite a difference, so I thank the city for that.
Oh, good.
And getting the generator, looking, they're waiting for a regulator to get the generator, so. Other than that, I think they're working around the workers down there, putting in the drain field there.
Hoping to miss the delivery date.
Okay.
If they had a delivery the Monday they started, and then two weeks have passed, and they'll have a delivery the 28th, so he's hoping to have it drivable again by the 28th.
Oh, good. There is a crack in the ceiling at the scout cabin in the hallway. And I took it upon myself to get ahold of Ellen Hine. And Ellen and I are gonna go down there and look at it and see how we could remedy that or if we even could fix it. So I'm gonna do that within another week or so. That's all I have to report. Any other committee?
I tuned in finally to the cemetery committee. Good news is they're gonna meet in person next time. They've been missing Ben and myself, but hopefully we'll both be here in person next time. And they were kind of curious about the aluminum poles. I'm not sure they even knew we had them yet. So we're kind of curious how the testing went on that. I don't know if we've got to fly a flag off them or fit them, or but.
We haven't flown a flag on them yet, but they're there, and Mitch got the eyes in them, so.
And quite a bit lighter?
Yeah. It's a, yeah, it's a world of difference than those steel pipes, for sure.
And then they were hoping that we'd come up with some money, I think, for, what do you call that, the wheeled?
The port-a-chapel.
The port-a-chapel, yeah, I think they sent a note to you, I seen, or something.
Yeah.
So they're, you know, they're eight, I don't know what they are, $8,000, $10,000, depending on how big or whatever. But I think they were hoping to get that in the budget for somehow next year, or look at funding options. And then there was some talk about burying people. I don't know the term, hell, natural type thing, eight feet deep. I don't know the logistics of that. Nope, I don't think there's a coffin or liner or anything, but.
No natural, natural burials, yeah.
Yeah, so there was some discussion on that. I don't know if it was really flushed out much, but.
And that would be, if that's something that they want to, we can obviously talk about it at that meeting, but if that's something they want to offer, and they need to propose that, and then.
You have to dig a hole deeper.
Is about as, yeah, and it's smaller. And so, of course, we don't do casket internments, you know, it's a third party that does that, but they have, on their fee schedule, they charge a special fee for natural burials, which is essentially digging as deep as the backhoe will go.
Anyway, it's hard to hear again on the phone and stuff, but I'm excited about getting back in person here.
And we need to, they kind of reach out and then mention that to me. Just like you and me, we both have a lot going on. The whole, like, getting an email at 5:30 on the day of, it just doesn't, doesn't work for me. And I know that's been a struggle for you, too. So we both need to reach out to Elaine this week and make sure that everybody's on the same page and stuff ahead of time.
I said I would pick up the car, but I guess that's not gonna work. So one of them will have to pick up a car, or if you're coming.
Yeah, okay. When is that, Stephanie, the next one? Is that next Thursday, or?
No, I think it's the second Thursday.
The second Thursday, so we got plenty of time.
Yeah, but Ben's here at the ESP, so.
Well, anyway, good news was I wanted to go back in person, so.
And we'll get Mitch in, too, to do the caretakers.
And we're talking a little bit about it's time to get started planning for Memorial Day and that kind of stuff. So then maybe that'll be a good test for aluminum poles or something, I don't know.
Yeah, oh, we're definitely, yeah, they'll definitely be up at Memorial Day, and so.
That's all I have. Thank you, Gerard.
I was wondering if you guys know, I looked yesterday, I didn't think to check again today yet, but there wasn't any link or information on the parks committee meeting, which is tomorrow.
They're meeting in person.
In person? Where is that?
Here.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I did attempt to go to the planning commission meeting, came down here, and there was nobody here. I don't know, it was on the calendar, but there was no meeting, I guess.
Listen, they've actually put canceled on the calendar, but they're not meeting right now, they don't have quorum.
They only have two members, two members only.
Oh, really?
They may after tonight.
Right, we have one more, you have the application, but.
Yeah, I saw that, that's, that was the gentleman that was in here the last, the other day. That was up on Louisiana.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice guy.
Okay. Any other committee, I mean, public work, nothing? Okay. Any topics on the floor tonight? Okay. Consent agenda for acceptance, library committee meeting minutes for December.
We do have Paul Volvo on the line, if you, after this, if you want to go back to the.
So this is actually Colback, it's not.
Sorry.
But he's willing to go through it, he sat in through it, but he's like, he doesn't know why they haven't shown up either.
Oh.
So I hope everyone's safe, that's what I've said. Okay, whoever was planning on driving here from St. Helens didn't have some issue.
So before you, before we do this.
We can just wait for them.
Just wait, yeah, I assumed that he was.
And if he's, if they don't show up, we can kick it to the next meeting.
Okay.
And present about it.
Okay, we'll just.
Colback, he's Columbia Economic Team, they're somewhat connected, but not separately.
Right. Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, library committee meeting minutes for December. Down on page 1, 3. Any questions or discussion on those meeting minutes?
What's the issue with the ADA amenities?
Well, there are none, because in 1999, you didn't have to have the push-button doors or anything. So neither City Hall nor the library have easy access for people in a wheelchair.
So are there, like, oh, I mean, like, the front doors, too? Is it like a double crash door or a single crash?
Well, it's just the closer is mechanic, is mechanic, like the store, store doors at the entrance of the senior center, so you can test how long it stays open once it opens for you.
Right.
We don't have, none of, neither of these buildings have that, because it wasn't code in 99 when they built. So we're not required to put them in, but it's come up here and it's come up there. So I think that's the issues they're talking about. Because the doors are kind of heavy, especially if you did not have a person with you and you are in a wheelchair, it's hard. I mean, they get in here, but it's difficult.
They want a button, they want a button they can push from.
I wasn't there, I'm assuming that's what they're.
It looks like they're investigating possible options and costs.
Yeah.
Some of that, some of those closures and crash doors can be modified to accept some of that fancy stuff, some of them can't, so.
Yeah. And some of them, you can pop the box into the exterior wall and go up and find electric.
I've even put lockouts on the counter for reception for little medical clinics. They go in there first, and it's not open yet, and they can see doctors coming and click it, and they come in, and then it's still locked, but let somebody in and out. A weirdo, they can lock it down.
Yeah.
Where it'll work on, or they can master shut it off if they want.
Yeah. Well, and I think they're looking at it for ahead of budget. Shannon's trying to get all the numbers in her budget of what she wants to do, so.
Oh, yeah, well, you can spend $10,000 on door hardware real quick.
Yeah.
For like one closure for a big.
Right.
Any other discussion on library meeting minutes for December? If not, I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda for approval. Council meeting minutes for February 7, 2022, and we'll do both of them at the same time. Any discussion on the February 7?
You gotta approve separately.
No, I could do them together.
I think one's accepting them, one's approving them, because you guys could change the minutes of your meeting. That's the only difference.
Yeah, typically.
I've done them both before, and.
Yeah, I just let it go.
She lets it go. We're easy around here.
Okay, well, let's, let's go by the book. Let's go back to the library meeting minutes for December. Is there any other discussion on that meeting minute? Anyone like to move to accept the library board meeting for December?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for approval. Consent agenda for acceptance, excuse me, library committee meeting minutes for December.
So moved, is there a second? A second, thank you. Counselor Norman, would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Bart?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for February 7, 2022.
I have one question, I guess, page 4. I knew the mayor's report. Last sentence on there is, he is making a few changes before bringing to the council. It kind of makes it sound like I am.
I am a Ben. Noted.
That was my, that was my reference to a he.
Sorry.
Okay, any other questions or discuss?
To Stacy Pelster, the he. My care.
We're out.
The very first line under presentation. It's the beginning of the second sentence, yeah.
Just forgot to ask.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone like to make any other discussion or about the meeting minutes for February 7? Questions? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the February 7 meeting minutes with the two changes?
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes from February 7.
Okay, so moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Bart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb? Motion.
Okay, moving right into unfinished business, staff report. ARPA criteria for intercultural society of Renonia requests.
This one's from me, so I did some more digging. Unfortunately, still did not find criteria that matched something like the scenario that Stacy was talking about. We couldn't, the only one I found that was even close was lack of revenue, but since they weren't actually hosting events, or there wasn't a denial of events or a loss of ticket sales, that's kind of a stretch also. And the building was donated to them as a group. So Intercultural Society of Renonia owns the structure, the city owns the land. So that's also kind of a different thing, it'd be different if we hadn't donated it, then maybe it would be our building, you could fashion some other scenario. But, and then also, there isn't $50,000 in this budget just out there for us to allocate in this cycle. If you guys were gonna do something, I'd have to go through you guys in the budget committee to be available like July 1. But I did send, on the 27th of January, Mrs. Pelster had emailed me saying, hey, can I get on the agenda? I said, well, talked to two counselors with the mayor, they are who set their agenda. And then I did give her the link, and I don't know if anyone went to it, but they, the feds under the EDA are giving ARPA grants, competitive grants, for travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation. That's how St. Helens got the little people mover for their Halloween Town Festival, to move people around the different sites of their festival. And I had sent that to Stacy, because I think she could make a compelling case to try and get funding through that. So yeah, that's what we found out, is that there isn't anything that we wouldn't, we would direct you guys to say in the scenario that wouldn't also risk us having to pay it back if they didn't like the spending of it, so. But the EDA thing, I mean, that people mover had to cost a pretty penny, because it's got carts and like a train front to drive people around, so it had to come somewhere. So that's what came out of that request. That's all the information I have.
Okay. So I have one question, the last sentence in your report.
Yeah.
Is that for insurance?
Yeah, I just need the updated one. I'm gonna send Stacy an email, I just wanted.
Yeah, okay.
Looking through all the documents we have last year's, we don't have this year's. And usually, those are a January, February thing, your insurance company sends to you anyway, so. Just wanted to write it down.
I believe we're covered until May, yes, I believe.
In the new policy, in this year's policy? Okay, yeah, because usually they just.
Just for your information.
Yeah, they, I didn't, I didn't suspect that you dropped insurance, I just need a copy of the, this current one, yeah.
Have you heard back from Stacy on the, on the travel tourism?
No, I just gave her that idea, and I haven't talked to her since she was at the meeting last time, so.
Okay.
And Paul texted me that it was about $70,000 for the people mover, because he's still watching us.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, ready to move into new business? Planning commission application from Mr. David Strickland. Page 9.
In your pocket, an application from Mr. Strickland. Typically, these go to the commission first, or the committee first, and then to you guys, but we don't have one, so they're aware that it's coming to you guys, but they couldn't pass it or anything, so. Hopefully you appoint him, so we have a planning commission again. Also, spread the word.
Yeah.
We got down to two again, huh?
Kind of funny how things evolve, and we're trying to fix a problem over here, and then all of a sudden, somebody's involved, and, oh, yeah, I sure admire the willingness to come forward and step up, and I'm in total thumbs up with Mr. Strickland's application. I gotta hop out the rest of the council?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a chance to chat with him, seemed like a pretty level-headed guy, so I didn't have any issues when I read this. They concern me about government experience, that's probably a good thing, in my opinion, so. I didn't have any issues at all, I was kind of glad he actually jumped in there, since he's living in our community, you know?
Well, with that being said, and majority, majority from the council moving this application, it's my honor to, to appoint Mr. David Strickland to the planning commission on this 22nd day of February 2022, 2/22/22.
Thank you.
That was the easiest one I've ever done. Staff report, 2021 street report.
This is just our basic, we do this every two years. We have, go out and do the, do the street, reevaluate street condition and get some other data. Dale helped out this year, which was really helpful, because I wasn't out there for a couple days messing around. And so, yeah, it's just our pretty standard, what the city owns as far as functional classification, and then other jurisdictions and private roads. And then our updated data for ODOT. So I used to do a lot of calculations, took a lot to get that together, and I didn't get things like the lane miles, that's optional with them. But it's good to have for, you know, the more information they have, the better your chunk of the gas tax is. So we've got, I've got a new setup with our streets data where I can just export this out. So starting next year, it's gonna be literally a 10, 15-minute process. Starting next year, it's gonna be literally a 10, 15-minute process, instead of taking me a couple of days of fighting spreadsheets to get, to get all the data sorted out. It's kind of, so the ODOT, as you can see, it has to be publicly owned in the city, so city, ODOT, county essentially, so private stuff has to be excluded. So the numbers are a little bit different, and then we didn't have their types before, so I would kinda have to sort that out, so. Doing some upgrades to our data sets, and so now our street our, our surface type is ODOT surface type, we just adopted their surface type for our data. So, it makes it a, a lot easier. So, pretty straightforward. As far as our surface condition continues to be good. Overall, across the city, three and a half or so is an average for all city assets. But then, of course, we do have some areas that, you know, we do all this work, and you think you're doing good, but then you've got those other streets that were on the lower end of the quality that continue to degrade as time goes on, so it's, you know, never, never-ending battle there, but overall, we continue, we've improved for the last six years, every year, in the overall quality of our, our surface condition of all of our streets combined, so. Thank you. I don't know, just everybody getting it together, and getting our SCA grants and getting that paving done, and we've, we've been on it pretty good here the last six years or so. And then I guess the, the meat of it, and probably what's most important to council, is projects for the coming years. We have three major projects identified. Of course, Louisiana, North Louisiana connection and upgrade, that's in the works. The engineering, I believe, is, well, getting closer, and I talked to Don Wallace at KLS, they've been having to go out and pick up some more topo stuff for, for Andrew and, and Lower Columbia's. So they're getting, they're getting close up there on that. And we just have to, you know, finalize the, the funding there, and, and hopefully see that in the next 18 months or so possibly, or maybe not this summer, but the following summer. Then we have State Avenue and Knott Street, which are two really important ones, of course, State Avenue is highly traveled. You know, it connects a community that's, you know, about half the size of Vernonia itself, out Keysey Road and, and Stony Point and Mellinger. So, it's, it's more of a resurface. Resurface so much, the curbs have disappeared, they're old, just ribbon curbs without real curb and gutter. The surface is deteriorating, so we're, we're kind of to that point where we can't just lay another. We, we can't just overlay again, we need to either do some grinding down, or, you know, something, put in new curbs, and of course, all the is Dale, Dale's been out mapping sidewalks and, and where we have ramps and stuff like that, and we've just got a lot of mismatched stuff along State Avenue sidewalks and ramps, a lot of missing ramps, so. That's kind of State Avenue. Knott Street is a little more complicated, we need to widen it, get in a bike lane or a mixed-use trail on one side, we need to pipe the ditch essentially on the north side, do stormwater, and then at the same time, we need to redo the water main. We have all, we've had those water issues with pressure down from the LDS Church and Nickerson, and then we also want to be to the point where we could possibly put a reservoir up on the hill in the future, the water, the master water plant, I believe, calls for that. So it's a little more complicated. We're working on the surveying now, KLS has it on their schedule, they're super busy. And then in the next year or so, it's gonna be brought up in budget, is to get what would be called a Phase 1 design done on that, where they kind of figure out what would be done, what's needed. But you don't, you, you basically, you don't go to the hole where you come out with the, you know, giant stack of final detailed plans, but you get a good idea of what you need, the basic engineering, path forward on any kind of permitting state stuff. Both involve some coordination with ODOT on the intersection, since they both connect to the, to the highway. And then, kind of having that in hand, you know, ODOT has a lot of grants for collector streets like this, but you have to have like a Phase 1 or full engineering to even be considered for that. We were working towards that at one, when we were trying to preserve photo solutions down there on California and move them across the street, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunities for funding, but it's one of those things where you gotta put some skin in the game and be, you know, they're just, us just going, well, you know, we'd like to do something, and we really don't know what the, all the problems are, what all the solutions are. That doesn't fly, because somebody else is like, oh, yeah, we already have a plan, we know what we need to do, we know what our financial needs are for this project, those are the ones that are getting funded, for those larger ODOT grants and, and other state transportation funds, so. You know, we've been talking about, not, since the day I came to the city, we've been talking about Knott Street needing an upgrade, and that was long before the Trailhead was there, or Nickerson was built out, almost built out. You know, so at some point, I guess, if we ever really wanna, unless we're just gonna somehow figure out how to come up with several hundred thousand dollars of our own, you know, we're gonna need to put some money up front, or we're never gonna be in a position to capitalize on the size of projects with, with state funding. So those are, those are the three big projects, I don't think that's a surprise to anybody, they've all been on the list for a decade. And then as far as the small projects, just like we've done in past years, we just kind of grouped together areas that are roughly the same geographic size. That's on the proposed projects map, you can kind of see where those are. East Alabama and Spencer Avenue number seven, it's gonna, it's already paid for, it's gonna get done this year. And then Weed is gonna get paid for too, and those, those funds are already secured once the stormwater is done there. So Weed from Cougar down to the trail will be getting paved. And then, yeah, there's our, our, kind of our other, our other projects, then one, three, four, five, and six are kind of whatever the funding looks like, or any other criteria, that's kind of our next four, five SCA grant project areas. As far as, as far as repaves go. And then as far as our it has come up, is, was brought up, and then also discussed in Public Works Committee, was that the streets on the east side of town, except for Heather, are oil mat streets, chip seal streets. And it's fairly, fairly inexpensive, or a lot less expensive, but you gotta catch the road at the right condition, if it degrades too much, it's, you're, you know, it's not, you're, you're stepping over a dollar to save a dime. We looked into a, a couple of outfits, it's about the same, it's about $9 per yard is what they, for some reason, the pricing is in square yards. So, about $9 per square yard, so we just upped that to a dollar, you know, per square, it came in a little under that, but a dollar per square foot, we would need to clean it, do any cracked ceiling, patch any holes, and then the contractor would come in. So, but it's relatively cheap for those streets, they're not gonna be expanded, there isn't a lot of build-out over there. Most of those streets aren't in bad conditions, so at, at some point, and the SDA funds will pay for it, so here in the next three to four years, if it works out with timing and, and the grant and stuff, we might just hit up all of those streets over there, will be fairly, fairly inexpensive. JR had sent us, had sent us a link. Did you send that to the rest of council?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, it was late in the day, Stephanie contributed, they probably haven't a chance.
So, yeah, I mean, if you guys are, you know, if you wanna, you know, if you want a, a good rundown of what it is and the different, the different techniques and stuff like that. Yeah, that's a, that's a, there's a lot of, yeah, it's, it's all, instead of going and looking in a lot of different places, it, it, it's a pretty good webpage, it's got a lot of good information. There are two types. One where they put a thicker material down, and then larger aggregate, and then they don't top that, so it almost becomes like a gravel road, but without movable gravel. And then they have, where they use a thinner coat, put down smaller aggregate, and then top coat it with another coat, which is exactly what ODOT did with Highway 40, 47. And I think over on those roads, I think that the the bigger aggregate without the top coat is a bit cheaper, and probably suits those roads pretty well based on their. But part of that, I think, is we would, if we were putting it out to bid, we may have the contractor, when contractors are bidding on that, have them do both and/or their recommendation, come out and what they, what they think would be the, or, or at some point, try to find somebody that could come out and assess that for us, as to what technique would be best for those streets for us. So at any rate, something to think of, and part of it is, we haven't spent, we've spent a lot of money over the last 10 years all on the west side of town, we've done nothing for the east side of the river as far as road improvements and stuff, so, something to think about, and then also, I also noted that this would be good for some of our others, our asphalted streets, to hit them up in the future, if we get to the point where we're kind of caught up on our bad streets. We have some areas that really need resurface, G and that little bit of F and E Street up there, and other, a few other areas that we need to do before we start thinking about using chip seal as a long-term preventative, but it would be nice for the city to get there, because it would be a lot cheaper for us to, we could get some more life out some of our asphalt streets. So, something to think about moving forward, and then we're gonna continue on with cracked sealing this year. Kind of had some bad timing and, and last year, and didn't, didn't get as much as we wanted to get done, Austin at Public Works is taking that over for this year, and gonna head that up, I would assume it would be in him and Jonathan, or and Chris, but we're gonna try, well, we're not gonna try, we are gonna get 80 hour van hours, or
Yep.
worker hours in this year. So, basically, two men per week. We got some new, they've got a better idea how they're gonna, how they're gonna operate, we're gonna get a couple of new tools, they make a special little squeegee for helping move it around, and also a little mop and stuff, so they're a little more prepared, got a little experience last year, but we really need to see what we can get done with 80 crew hours, and what that equates to. And hopefully we can, you know, I think it'll, I think we'll do pretty good on it, if we can, if we can get that much in, and so then I also had a map of areas that are kind of identified for that. I think some of those streets are, might be like Jefferson. A in front of the grocery store and post office, and down there, that road is actually, I don't, I don't think it's as high quality as we, I don't know if it was just this winter, but that's, that block is, is deteriorating pretty badly, I think we may end up needing to get it on the repave list sooner than, sooner than later, I don't think cracked sealing is gonna help that one at all at this point, so. At any rate, so that's, that's where we're at, we've got our plan forward for our next five years of grants or so, and our big project stuff, and just wanted to present that to you, and if you had any questions, or.
You answered one of the questions I had when I read the packet, Ben, is why, why the difference in engineering costs between Knott and State, and you definitely answered my question, it's a lot more complex.
And then it's more than, it's the thing with Knott too, with, when it comes to funding. So State Avenue is not a, there's, there's no increased capacity. Can't use SDCs at all. You know, we're gonna have to, we're essentially gonna have to put in new curb and gutter, probably some minor storm upgrades, and then re-crown and pave the road without SDC money, so we're gonna have to, that one's gonna be a little trickier. But yeah, the, with Knott Street, we've got a water, a big water component, a stor, a large stormwater component, the street component, which is increasing capacity, you know, I mean, even with Nickerson going in with just a few houses, immediately, all the neighbors there, you know, and LDS Church is pretty busy on Sunday, we start having traffic issues, because it's a very, it's a narrow, you know, being a narrow street, so we're gonna have a lot more options on Knott Street as far as funding goes, out with our own money, but probably some other money. State Street's gonna be complicated. Something that, you know, Josette and I discussed is trying to compel the county to get on board, and when we get to that point, who's ever on council, whether it's you guys or anything else, that's the kind of politic and, that we need, is going to the county commissioners and raising a stink, they've got, you know.
County shit.
They've got so many people, and they've got log trucks running on there, and it's a, you know, it's a major, we need them to be a partner in fixing that, and I don't wanna sound mean, but, you know, if they just wanna blow us off on that, well, we could always put a 10-ton weight limit sign at public, at, at the county line, and they could all just go around on Stony Point with log trucks and dump trucks.
Warehouse is a big player, too.
So, you know, that's a major artery. The city's responsible for it, but yeah, like you said, the county warehouse, or they've got a lot, or other people have a lot of traffic running on that street as well, and it isn't, you know, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's not your family SUV that's doing that big degrading, it's the log trucks and you know, the big heavy trucks hauling pit run out there for, you know, roads and stuff, so. you know, the big heavy trucks hauling pit run out there for, you know, roads and stuff, so. Just something to keep in mind for you or who's ever sitting there and here in a couple of years when we're hopefully ready to go on that.
Also, I'd like to give you a kudo mark for these maps. I think they're very helpful. It's really easy to see what the streets are and what they need. Well, and they need to work and and they're great maps. Good job.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, and that's the that's the piece for you guys, the visualization part. Luckily, Vernonia is small enough. You can see the whole town on an eight and a half by eleven. And kind of flip between them and and see what they're going, so. And then also I did, I think I mentioned that we're working on mapping the sidewalks and getting that all cleaned up. And then Stephanie and I are hoping to start this week. It'll probably take us a couple of sessions, but I'm all set up in the mapping software with the layers. We're going to get all of the past sidewalk waiver remonstrances mapped and our local improvement district properties mapped. So that we can see that all in context with the with the sidewalks and the ramps, crosswalks. And that'll, I think that'll help long term, especially you guys are, you know, continuing to formulate. And so you can actually the the finished web product is up at sidewalks.vernonia-or.gov. So if you want to go and see that, and like I said, it's a it's a work in progress. I'm still try doing some cleanup work on the sidewalks and Stephanie and I will be working to to try to get all those waivers in. Here and I'll I'll given up, I'll put in a small staff report when when we're when that's done. But you can go and look at that any anytime you want. Sidewalks.vernonia-or.gov. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, it was like the mayor said, that was a good report here, pretty clear. Was a little surprised to see State. I thought we didn't have control of State, that we weren't. We have to pay for it up to E. Is that what you were trying to?
All the way to the, all the way to the top of the hill.
Oh, sort of challenger then.
Yeah, but it's from.
But they controlled the speed limit. That was weird. We had that conversation.
State controls speed limit.
Okay, and then not a couple of years ago that come up, we were talking about doing some paving on there. And then I thought you said, Josette, the county was going to redo all that. We held off because he's planning on these upgrades. Maybe was it part of the trail thing or something?
No, we were, yeah, we were gonna, the county gave it to us in like nineteen ninety eight. Control of it to us because it was a county road up till then. We weren't going to pay, I think what we're, what I talked about doing off of not was the Nickerson paving.
No, we were talking about upgrading it and there was something like a grant was going to come through and a county, someone was going to do a bunch of upgrades like.
Probably us needing to do the upgrades because we've been talking about the widening and the and the pedestrian. There's no pedestrian amenities on that road at all. Your two cars are going, you're in the ditch. So I don't remember.
Okay.
Exactly.
And I, I do actually remember, we did have some conversations. I think with that was just kind of like my discussion with State Street was the county was putting the trailhead in.
Collaborating?
Yeah, and collaborating, seeing if we couldn't get, especially like if if we put a shared use trail slash sidewalk essentially, like a wide sidewalk on one side for bikes and pedestrians. You know, that the county, when we getting the county in on that is, I think, is the discussion that we that we had was trying to, you know, compel them to be a partner in in the project.
Yeah, I just thought kind of into works, I guess. It was a couple of years ago. Yeah, this, I'm not a chip seal expert by any means, so that was why I was fishing around on this and I little to the back of it, the best practices like lot of prep work, you know, it's like painting a house. You paint over loose paint. You're going to get and all those streets down there would really some of them if, you know, they're talking about fixing stuff up to six months before you even chip seal.
You gotta go and you gotta prep it, you gotta.
Before.
Well, I mean, but you gotta, you gotta crack seal and you have to replace chunks if there's if there's a rut or something like that, you're not, you know, you're not improving well. And there's, I mean, case in point, right above. Now, now Noakowski there where the highway slipped. And they did that crappy patch job and they chip sealed over it. Well, you got a nice surface there, but you still got a third of the road with a two inch dip in in the highway. So we would definitely, but once again, that chip sealing part is you, it the road cannot be in too far, you know, if you're going to go in and No, no, it it needs to be, but most of those are in pretty, they're actually in pretty good condition over there for the for the most part, but we tore a third of the houses out. There's no more new homes to be built. So they're fairly low, you know, they're fairly low traffic. And that was something we had, we had we had had a discussion about a few years ago with Public Works Committee is, and one of the reasons that we were kind of focusing money and weren't really focusing on the east side of the river. And I hate to say it, but it was tax base. You got more people and more tax dollars and more cars in these other areas. So we were unfortunate, we, well, yeah, fact of life, we were targeting those areas. But at some point, like the east side of the, the east side of the river, we do, you know, we can't ignore all of them forever. And if we have a road that we can repair cheaply with a cheap method before it gets too bad, I mean, we, you know, we we need to do that. We're gonna, the crack sealing. We're we're definitely going to do Nickerson this this summer. Is that part of what we're going to do? And then probably Heather as well, so. They're they're good candidates and we'll we'll take care of those, so.
Oh, far as, yeah, on the CZ Trail and the Holt's Trailhead. And I, I see it's kind of a devil, I'll get your catch twenty two. Being able to sell a trail or pedestrian way on the Knott Street there to try to get grant funding is attractive probably, but the CZ Trails heading probably a different direction. They want to go out to railroad grade, come out Coon Creek. They're really pushing, trying to push for that direction now, so be aware of that. So I don't know how soon any of that will happen.
And they said there's still their intention to to bridge at the base there?
If we could, if we could cross the river with a bridge. As me, that's kind of part of the Right now, we're, they're utilizing that the CZ Trails comes over the river, U Bridge. But good point.
I mean, that's something to be aware of though, you know, and the two brands going at the same time, it fixes it finishes and then go this way. Yeah, they probably won't even catch it.
Are they still gonna, are they still gonna have Holt's Trailhead there?
Yeah, yes.
People are still going to come down not to avoid the extra up and down that they do on the Coon Creek, probably.
That's a pretty flat grade. That's an old railroad grade, so it's flat.
But do they have the money right now to start constructing that?
No, not right now.
Right.
I mean, in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still going to have people though that potentially will park there and use that as a jumping off point.
Right, yeah, for car traffic out there.
Still lots of car traffic and there's people in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can still justify a sidewalk or whatever pathway.
Yeah.
But just wanted to make sure people.
Don't use it as your selling point if they're going for it, too.
That was a good one. And it'll go be over here on Pebble Creek. And then we'll have to solve that.
Right.
Well, with extra funding, with what you sent to Stacy actually would allow us for Knott Street to get funding. Because it says down here, grant process, tourism, outdoor recreational. That trailhead fits all those criterias.
Yeah.
For this one that you sent Stacy, the other, right there, is there all the avenues?
Yeah, I don't know if they'll let you do the road part with the ARPA funding. Because we were looking at that and the only way we could use it for SCA backfill funding was loss of revenue because they didn't let us apply because of COVID and all that. But yeah.
I think you're right, Josette. There wasn't allowed for new roads.
Yeah.
But you could still get the
Sidewalks.
Some path connectivity stuff.
Lane sidewalk.
Hard to go that route.
Or even in preparation until they get there because it seems like whatever million dollar bridge over the Coon Creek is going to be. Ever. That's a hard sell, but maybe there's bike money there anyway, who knows?
Do they, does asphalt or chip seal companies, they give a warranty on their, how long it lasts?
I don't.
We haven't had anybody come out because we know roads have been chip sealed before, but we haven't done any in our time here.
I've seen them not last very long, but I'm just wondering if we did the work ourselves, they have a way to say, well, you prepped it, we're not responsible.
Well, I think we would.
That's what they would say as soon as it failed. Well, you did the prep.
Well, if that's, I mean.
I guess we have to know that going into it.
And that could, yeah, and that would be, that's why I added that extra, whatever fifteen cents per square foot onto it to make it a dollar even per square foot. Was saying that could be Public Works time, but honestly, we don't, I mean, that's just another complication. You know, for Public Works and really if you if you have an outfit that specializes in coming in and doing the prep.
A lot of people.
And then chip sealing it.
Don't trust anybody to do it the way they want.
Right.
Because luckily, we have not all of the asphalt that we've had done since
Yeah.
Since I've been at the city, we have not had a single major issue with the asphalt. Thank goodness. We haven't had to go back and, you know. Cost paving had done most of it, but yeah, up to this point, everything has been.
Well, even Five Star, theirs was great, too.
So.
Do we annually check our seventy five point one miles of road?
Yeah, and it, this is how it shows up to you in this report.
Okay.
We didn't always, but we started doing that after the oh seven flood. We did not have a streets inventory. So the roads that had asphalt washed off of them in the flood, we could not be reimbursed for those losses from FEMA. So that's when we started inventorying the streets and the conditions so we could prove it. If something happened, this is what it was before it happened.
And now we have, yeah, so that's like, like A and B and C there. We repaved all of those, so they've got nice pavement. We had another big flood and they were out with track hose and other tracked vehicles again. And those, even if the roads just got dinged up a little bit, we have we have conditions. A lot of those roads, they they weren't in the best state before the flood. Well, then the flood came. And then they were running tracked vehicles all over them and it just tore them up and then, but then, yeah, FEMA was like, well, if you had proof that the the flood and these tracked vehicles are what tore these roads up, we'd repave them for you. So now we've, that was one of the reasons that we originally started it and then it just kind of grew into two. ODOT started requiring us to do this detailed reporting every year. And we started to use it to target where we were doing the SCA repaving. So it kind of became more multifaceted as as we moved on, so.
We gained six and a half miles of road this year.
Well, there's a note in there because there's some weird.
Six and a, six and a half?
Wow.
No, no, six hundredths of a mile.
Yeah.
Six hundredths. Our net change.
Okay, I got.
And so really, the only change we should, like next year or two years from now, when you guys see this again, or if I do the ODOT reporting, I can just send you that portion of it in a staff report next year. The reason that there's these little bits of change, and as it's noted down there, it's because I was reworking the data a whole bunch and Dale was out doing some ground truthing and stuff for me. So I did a lot of little cleanup on on several streets. It's a lot that were extended too far where there really wasn't a street there. You know, etc. So better imagery and and, you know, better eyes on the ground, so.
So am I reading that wrong? I still see lane miles thirty six point eight nine?
Yeah, that's, this is the first year I've done lane miles.
Ah, I got you.
So al- almost all the roads are two lane miles except for alleys. And weed from the one way weed is a single lane mile.
Oh, I see what you're doing.
And then, of course, these, like I said, these are the publicly owned, open to travel by passenger vehicles and publicly maintained roads. Which are, have some overlap, but then, of course, when you look at what the city is actually responsible for within the city. It's only nineteen and a half, more or less, so. Well, thanks for, Dale.
I I think you said something in Public Works. I don't know, hard for you to do an apples and apples comparison to the previous report. But I did this kind of a rough, just off your money on page sixteen for the streets that are on our target list.
Yeah.
If I remember right, we were, we were close to around a half million dollars or so a couple of years ago or maybe.
In totality.
Yeah, totality. And excluding what we have grant funding for now, we're we're well under three hundred thousand, so. What I I would like to see in the future, which I think you'll be able to do is the question for us is, are we gaining ground or are we losing ground? To me, it appears we're gaining ground if we can continue at this current rate of repair. I mean, under, we're under three years and, and yeah, we we both know there's some streets are going to fall on this list in the next two years, but I don't think there'll be, I think it's going to be a small group. I don't know, you know, what the footage is going to be. But, you know, just I'd like to see that in the future though, is is a graph comparing the work. The previous plan to your new plan, you know, are we gaining, what's the rate that we're gaining on this?
So the tricky part is, how do you account for the cost going up if you're using the money number?
And that that would be because you do your square footage, so we could compare the square footage, but then we can also look at the cost. Because those are, those are the two parts of the equation. So that's the other thing that'll eat our lunch is the cost will eventually will start going backwards because of cost if the state doesn't. And and they have in the past, they've been raising that quite rapidly.
Went, right.
I mean, it was like fifty grand every other year there for quite a while. And now we're doing a hundred grand a year when we can get it, so.
Okay.
So I, I mean, that's just the thing for council that, because if we're seeing we're losing So I, I mean, that's just the thing for council that, cause if we're seeing we're losing ground.
Yeah.
We have to start thinking about then how do we pull that revenue in, like we're back to.
Is it a bond or is it?
Yeah, is it? Gas tax again or?
Just letting, letting things go, it's.
Well, yeah, and I don't think, I mean, I can't speak from the fellow counselors, but I don't want to let it go. I don't want to, you know, we kind of got behind the eight ball and before we kind of woke up on this and really got going again. Uh, I don't know what the funds would allow.
Yeah.
But we, you know, our, our goal is buy no street under fair condition. We don't want to get under fair. I've heard some people want to say good is the target, you know, so, which may be, but.
Right.
So anyhow. Well, you can think about.
I've got it.
I got it. Think about that.
Well, we have to, yeah.
Dang it, Dale, now you gave him a.
Well, yeah, now I've got.
Now he's got a problem he's thinking.
I think because they always just did like the average street condition and we continue to improve there. I'm not, yeah, the dollar part like tying in. So we would have to, so we would just say, what is the cost of everything that's, uh, marginal or poor? At this.
Moment.
At this moment, this is what.
At this rate.
And yep, at these rates, if we were just to get everything to eliminate marginal and poor streets of all kinds, this is, this is what that amount is, could be. At this, and I could even, that's something I don't even have to wait every two years to do. We could always just, like I said, now that I'm doing the, and squared away with the ODOT reporting, you guys will see that every year, so.
Yeah, you know, if we get the excess SCA money, there's another hundred grand. I, I mean, this starts getting pretty skinny after that.
All right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll think about, I'll think about that, Dale. I mean, I'm doing nothing but streets and sidewalk stuff and here lately, so maybe I can, maybe in the next couple of meetings I'll get it.
Generate this sheet right now and you're gonna generate the same scenario two years from now, have some new streets on it.
Yeah.
Some of these are gonna be gone.
Yeah.
So then it's just a, it's just a, you know, you get your square footage and you get your cost factor there. And then if we could just put it in a side by side, so we could see what we're, where we're headed.
I got, I, I got an idea. I got, I got an idea. All right, thanks.
All right.
Thank you for a good report and all your work you do.
See ya.
sidewalks.vrnonia-or.gov.
He's, uh, he wants you to look at it.
He's a new baby.
Yeah, his new baby project.
Police department update.
You know, my usual report, um, January, our calls for service, we ended with 123. Nothing super significant there. Code enforcement, they started their January with 34, ended with 36. Still only one person in the, the mix for possibility for new hire. There was in fact a case, Sergeant Carmen, Carnahan and I talked about when Counselor Ash was riding along. There ended up being two arrests made in that case and we've seen a significant drop in our catalytic converter and fuel thefts. So although they weren't arrested associated with our cases, um, we, we had suspected those two already. We just didn't have any proof. Um, and they were identified by good surveillance videos. So, so far that's, that's been a positive and those numbers are dropping, so keep my fingers crossed it keeps going down that way. Other than that, I got nothing else.
Okay, any questions for that?
Have you talked to your former officer about cameras any?
Yeah, we, we do have a quote that'll probably come around in the next meeting.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna amend it a little because we didn't have skate park on there. And now that I know where we're potentially putting lighting, that was one area he didn't even have in the proposal, so we gotta get that.
Okay.
Included for budget and for you guys take a look at it.
He's, he's got to update the proposal and then we didn't have originally, when he started the proposal process, he thought we were gonna be able to link up with some internet service there at the restrooms. Um, and that not being an option, that leaves kind of looking at wireless option, so that's gonna play with the cost a little bit.
Donald had something.
Possible that we can interview your one candidate that wants to apply?
I was actually gonna call him this week to see if he's even available anymore.
Okay.
We've had the application now for three months.
Oh boy.
So my, my guess is if he was really strongly looking for a job, he probably has one. Uh, but I'm gonna give him a call this week and find out where he's at, if he's still interested. The hiring process, it's, it's kind of lengthy and that's why we don't necessarily like to do it for one guy. Cause there's, there's testing, there's ORAPAT, those are all those things that I have to schedule and proctor. Um, and then if you get beyond that point, then there's background investigation that takes several, several weeks, if not longer, depending on how much time I have to get it done, or if I contract it out to somebody else. Um, then there's psychological and medical, um, psychologics and medicals, the last time we did one, and I know that they're still busy. They were three weeks to four weeks out, um, getting appointments for those. Um, so it's, it's, it's a long process, so we like to generally have more than one candidate to choose from.
Yeah, but we're kind of getting tired where we're, we're not getting anybody because we're waiting for more to come.
Yeah, well, and, and again, too, the applicant that, that we do have is an entry level applicant. So that person, that's, that's an academy trip, that's an 18-month training program, so.
Well, we're also competing, what the city is saying now is they're trying to fill seven.
Oh my God.
Sheriff's positions right now.
Yeah.
And, and the sheriff's office as well, and they're, they're now, they're now in contract negotiations, which is gonna bring their, their wages higher, higher yet, and then the cost of living hasn't come out yet officially, but it sounds like it's gonna be rather high.
Like seven percent.
Gee, we talked about, uh, potentially offering a hiring bonus back in October and you're gonna come back with some.
Yeah, I, I haven't actually done a whole bunch of research on that because it's, it's gonna be really difficult to go, yeah, we're gonna give new people a whole pile of money to come here and work, but the people that stuck it out get nothing.
Yeah, he, you did look into, other agencies have been doing the, talk about the retention.
They, they did do some, some retention bonuses.
To, to combat that bonus for the new person. So he did look into that, but yeah, not a ton.
Yeah, and I, I, I just don't know if, uh, when we're trying to increase our, our pay scales at this point to come up to where we're a little bit more competitive with everybody else and then trying to come up with some hiring bonus program and to do stuff for our current staff as well. I, I think we're gonna run out of pool of money real fast. I think it's gonna disappear.
Well, it seems like we're in this catch 22, uh, we don't want to offer a bonus or because we that, and we don't want to raise the raises because of that, or we can't do the negotiations with the union because of one person and everything is just in this great big stall going in circles. So what are we gonna do? Just say we're gonna have three cops forever or?
Well, I hope not.
Seems like you're kind of almost like deflated with the process.
I'm a lot deflated with the process, just to be completely honest and you can see it in your face. There's been, there's been times here where, God, we used to open a position up and we'd have 20 people apply. And that's, that's a lot of people for a small town and now all of a sudden we, we're lucky we're getting one.
So if you find an existing officer that's within, been working within six months or four months, do you have to do all that psych evaluation?
Yep, yep.
You have to.
It's required, even, even if, if, if I decided, you know what, I'm gonna go to work for the sheriff's office tomorrow. I have to go through that same background process, the same psychological and medical.
Working, doing that stuff. I think there'd be an exemption if you've been working.
Well, it's quicker.
There used to be and that actually just recently changed within the last couple of years where the psychological evaluation, if you were a direct transfer from another agency, that you, you didn't have to necessarily do that. You still had to do the medical, but you could waive the psychological, but now it's, it's the whole package.
Probably because you get people that pass their problems on down the line, right? Some.
Let their employee go and it's not a good.
People will say, if you resign, we won't fire you.
But, and law enforcement is a little bit finicky too, because some, sometimes we see some things over the course of our career that could, could mess with your head. And it, I mean, it's, it's positive that they're doing psychological evaluations on people exiting one agency and coming into another because you don't know what they've gone through in the other agency and how, how the, the, the baby deaths or the fatal car crashes and, and the stuff that they've had to deal with has affected them mentally.
Yeah.
And that's, it's definitely helpful.
Is that something where you can take a pool of two or three and say, okay, you're gonna be in their interview, so all of you go take the psych or you have to wait till you hire and then?
We generally won't, won't go down that because of the cost. We won't go to the medical and the psychological until we have a tentative offer of employment.
So can you put them on with that pending or do you?
We have to wait for all that to get done. Gotta wait for it all to get done.
Meanwhile, they could get a job on a boat in Alaska and say, forget it.
Absolutely. And I don't, I haven't checked the academy status for a little while, but getting people actually into the basic police academy is, they were really, really delayed. And I haven't looked at their, their upcoming dates, but there was, there was some where they, they possibly weren't gonna make their 18-month requirements.
Sounds like there's so many hoops to go through, it almost makes cops stay where they're at instead of having to go through all that.
They're either staying where they're at or they're gonna retire. They're, the ones that have been around a, a long time are gonna say they've had enough and move on. Portland, I think is doing, they're doing their retention bonus or something to the effect to try to maintain what they have. Because they're, they're, they're down almost a couple hundred officers, I guess.
Over 200.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got two, two of their ex-officers come back. I mean, that was, I mean, that tells you something right there.
Who came back? I didn't hear that.
Well, they, they did a program to bring back, I think kind of short-term, I think. Some of their retired officers are bringing them back just to try to bolster the ranks for while they're doing their hiring process. Okay. And they only got two out of five of them, and then a couple hundred are retired with the timeframe and.
Wow.
Everybody else is like, see ya.
And then we, we also have our, our workshop with the, with the sheriff coming up. So I'm, I'm kind of delaying things a little bit and I'm not being super, I'm not promoting the open position as heavy, heavy until after that meeting is done and council has made an absolute decision on, on which direction we're going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I met, I think his name was Sean, Columbia County Sheriff guy.
Guy that's assigned to our district.
With the beard.
Yep.
Nice guy and I was.
Chit chat.
With him a little bit just to say hi and get to know him and then he was in, actually here, it's just after dark. Maybe we were after a council meeting, I can't remember. He was sitting down there by the skate park. I don't think it was dark yet, but then we got talking, we're, that's kind of right now. What I call the crime wave or whatever, we had a little, everything was kind of scuttling up, people were talking on Facebook or whatever. And he didn't seem to be really up to speed on it, but, you know, I said it'd be nice if we were more of a presence maybe later at night. And he said, well, yeah, I'd be willing to do that, but no one's ever said anything I could talk to pixly and then I never knew what happened with that, but he was more willing to do a late night shift or be here at two or three in the morning or whatever, but in fact, he preferred it, but I never heard about that.
Well, and I, I think with, with the sheriff, I mean, obviously they're, they have some, some of the same budget issues that we do and, and for money, they can accomplish just about anything. Um, and, and I, as, as much as I hate to say it, I mean, I, I've been talking, I talked to the sheriff today and about potentially trying to get some of the overnight shifts at least covered for the emergency call out stuff because right now we're paying on-call time that I would really prefer not to pay. Um, and of course, that's, that's gonna cost, he, he doesn't want to send somebody up here for an emergency alone. He wants to have a minimum of two, two deputies come up and that's something that we potentially would have to pay for a minimum of four hours for two deputies to come up here. On an emergency basis in the middle of the night, uh, when, when most of the county doesn't have anybody on duty.
That's what I'm saying, if we're thinking of maybe paying for a sheriff spot or a half or one and a half.
Still paying the half.
Two and a half or whatever we end up, it doesn't do us a ton of good if they're here at noon.
Right.
Callouts are at 3:00 AM.
Yeah, the thing is, is there's not a lot of callouts at 3:00 AM.
They're. Could be a car wreck or whatever, right?
Well, there, there could be a, a number of things, but they're, they're few and far between and al- ultimately that's why the scheduling is the way it is for, for us anyway. Because there's, we, we gotta go where the calls are, otherwise we're gonna just be working non-stop. And, I mean, yeah, there, there are call, the callouts in the middle of the night. It, it happens occasionally.
Days off, right?
Yeah, and then covering days off and everything else and it's, it's, it's a struggle with three guys. It's almost impossible and of course, we're only paying for half of a, a position with the sheriff, so, oh, that's 20 hours a week. And he's not going to rearrange that deputy's schedule so much off kilter to help us fill a 20-hour gap in the middle of the night.
Right.
Um, so he's gonna keep his guy on the same rotation that he's working with the rest of his crew. Um, and then when he's here, he's here, uh, but his primary responsibility right now is in the Haylen Valley. So a, a lot of time, he's not necessarily right here in the city, but he is outside.
Yeah, for a while I seen him in town, seemed like more of a presence. And I mean, I'm not here all the time, obviously, but it seemed like the last month I haven't seen him around. Have they called him off because we've hit our hours or do they have somewhere?
They've, they've been up here.
I've seen him.
We're just missing them in passing. There was, just over the last week, they were, there was three, three or four calls that they dealt with here for us while we weren't on. Um, and then there was numerous traffic stops throughout between just outside on Highway 47 and then right here in the city. And they, the thing about the sheriff's office is obviously we have a deputy assigned here, but they don't like to work by themselves. So if one of them's up here, generally it's gonna pull another one up here, um, because that person wants to work with the other guy. So sometimes that's why you usually end up seeing two floating around up here.
So when's the sheriff coming up? I forget, or we set a date yet?
I'd say it was March 9th.
I believe, wasn't it?
I thought it was the night.
I think maybe, maybe. What's the date of the night?
I think it's the night.
Okay.
And we, well, can you have him bring the data of how much he's been here in Veronia or how many calls and stuff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure he's bringing it, but I'll remind him. He actually asked me today, he's, he's, he's putting his presentation together and he couldn't remember off top of his head what the date was and I said, I thought it was March 9th, but.
It was the 20th, he couldn't make, that's right.
Is it a 6:30 thing or something?
Yeah, it's a workshop.
County's got a dog?
They used to, they, they still do.
I was gonna say, because I seen him at school on Sunday.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what.
I wasn't sure if they actually reassigned him yet or not. The dog actually was De- Deputy Pesio's dog who was here and he just went to Bend. So he's working for Bend PD now, um, so they had to reassign that dog to somebody else. So I wasn't sure if the dog actually was back on the road or not.
Yeah, I don't know if they had a call to the school or something on Sunday.
Some stuff going on up there, but I don't.
There was the lights all going. I was like, where? And I didn't see anybody, but they were asked, did a perimeter around.
No, we've had to come with some alarm calls and then we've had a rash of 911 hangup calls from up there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, some of them were during events and then other ones, and, and I don't know if it's more of that phone line issue that's been going around. But some of them, they, they didn't have, they're, couldn't hear anything on the other end and then there was a couple of them where it sounded like it was heavy breathing and then they'd hung up.
You don't live here because you'd have to go respond to all that, huh?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry, I'm 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 out of town.
Out of position.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief, for your report and thank you for what you do for our community.
Appreciate it.
So is the camera thing going to come to us next time then?
Yeah, as soon as he can get it back with the change in the wifi and then the re, now that I know where the light poles are positioned, because his proposal has like a aim this way, it'll hit this mark and this is what the visual is. It's kind of a detailed proposal that shows you really the scope of how far the cameras will see and stuff.
He, when I talked to him, um, last week.
Yeah.
Early last week, he said that he is more than willing to come up and do a presentation if you guys would like.
Yeah.
Um, and just bring some power.
Yeah, if you want him in person or you'd like a written one, either way, we have a written one.
Listen to him. That's just my feeling, but.
Yeah.
Sure.
And being able to see the the technology that's there and he he showed me some of the stuff that they're doing. They they give obviously a monitoring service as well. So they've got their cameras up and they they get notification when one of these cameras gets triggered. And they'll actually come up and have a conversation with whoever is there. And there was, there was one of them that he was showing me where the guy walks up and he's doing something. And then the security logs on and and starts, you know, can this is back tack security? How can we help you? And the guy looks up and goes, oh, shh.
Please don't glue our bathroom door shut again, right? I saw Port or Park's person trying to get into a restroom. It was glued shut on the magnet. And I was like, are you kidding me?
Oh, no, they're ingenious, those little guys.
Camera right there pointing at the person.
Well, and one of the cameras I had mentioned too, he's got a three sixty.
Yeah.
That will will cover a lot of ground. And then just reaiming a couple and putting a couple at the skate park, I think will be great, but.
Yeah.
There.
I think the skate park is the catalyst to get all these cameras up and let every, these kids know, there's no more of this.
Yeah, we're done with this.
And then the quality is good, but of course, you know, just just like when I I had the Verkata people, they're going to pay for quality.
Yeah.
And pay what you can.
Yeah.
You're going to pay for what you're getting, so, um, it is less than Verkata.
Yeah.
Isn't it? And then we were trying to work on, you know, they they had some stuff on their quote. Um, there was a bucket truck rental.
Yeah, we're like, we got that.
Well, maybe we can have a public works guy run the bucket truck while they put the the cameras up.
Yeah.
And and save a little bit of money that way, but. I'll, I'll get in touch with him tomorrow and see if he can come up.
Yeah.
So would just potentially be, we have to wait till the skate park is done and just mount them all at once. We have, we don't really have a pole by the restrooms over there. Are we going to mount it somewhere else or?
No, he he went on site and figured out where he would mount the ones on the infrastructure right now. Skate park's the only one he didn't have the poles, because I didn't know where they were going to be proposed, so.
Yeah, he was. He was like, what skate park? I didn't know he has.
I guess in a couple of months that'll be done or is the poles our deal?
The poles are out of our twenty thousand.
The lighting or something?
Yeah, the lighting. Park amenities. That's what we're calling them.
Should there be a drinking fountain there? I forgot to ask.
Yeah, that's the goal is that there would be, our amenities would do the signage, the benches, picnic tables, lighting and sod and a drinking fountain. Because in the skate parks bid, they just had it left as dressed dirt ready for seeding. But we all know our window is so short for growing grass seed here and the kids are going to be walking right through that dirt into brand new cement. We need to just pay for sod.
That's the middle.
The middle and then on both sides of the little sidewalk going in.
Okay.
Is was just going to be left dressed dirt and I'm like, no.
Very big area then.
Yeah.
Huh?
Not a very big area.
It's pretty big.
Was it?
It's the length of it by probably thirty feet deep.
Oh.
On each side of the sidewalk where you go from the parking spots to the actual skate park oval.
Okay.
There's some sod there, but shouldn't be that cost, too much cost.
Haven't got a chance to look at it in the daylight or not week or so, but yes.
Well, and it looks funky because now they got the steel rings up and you're like, how the heck is that going to work? But it'll slowly, slowly take in shape.
One of my guys reps for United Rental says, oh, we're known as getting a skate park. I said, how in the hell did you know that? He goes, well, I rented the equipment to them, so.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, any ordinances or resolutions tonight? Letter from FEMA.
This is kind of an informational letter to you guys, but also props for Ewolani at the police department, because she was our representative that worked tirelessly. All our pieces updated and turned into the plan that we jointly with all the cities in the county turned in and got approved with FEMA. So she deserves some kudos for that work because she was tireless and going through that document with a tooth comb and making sure everything was right, so.
Do we have to do that every five years? Chose that to keep it, um, updated?
Yeah.
And?
We we all submit to our emergency management up at the county and then emergency management submits their collected plan with the different sections for the different towns to FEMA. And then that keeps us on the good side of FEMA when disasters happen, because you have a plan, you're following their rules, you're doing what they want.
And Margaret.
Well.
It was her from her.
She's the chair, so, yeah.
Okay, um, letter from Columbia County Economic Team.
Yes, so this is also just a FYI for you guys, uh, from Paul. They've hired a director for the Small Business Resource Center, so that's the person that now our businesses are going to engage with. And our money that we put in skin in the game should help our businesses have access like he detailed out for you guys.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty cool that out of thirty six applicants and out of four states from those thirty six, thirty six applicants, they picked someone local. I'm glad they did.
Yeah. It's always a little bit of a burn when you pick someone from Kentucky and you're like, how do you even know about the Pacific Northwest? But, yeah. Worked out.
Looks like they're all working from home during the building remodel. I'm just curious when they're, I thought Paul said you were going to do, come up to Renonia and do like an onsite, hands on thing.
Like a meet and greet with the businesses and what they offer and that type of thing?
Be up here at some point. I just didn't see that in the letter.
Yeah, this is pretty new, so I think he hasn't, they haven't formulated how they're going to network with each community.
What do you think Joshua will come, come up?
Oh, I think he'll come up, but Paul was talking about like a kind of staging at a spot and letting businesses sign up for appointments of help or whatever, kind of somewhere locally, like a satellite, even if it's every biannually or something to get the business owners that can't make the trip and leave their store for a long period of time to go visit them.
For potential new people, right?
Yeah, new business, new people with new ideas.
They just got to get the information out to everybody somehow and then make a date to come up, I guess.
Yeah.
Otherwise they show up and nobody even knows they're here.
Well, and that's the thing too, is they, when they do that, we could offer them, we have, you know, the scout, the cabin in the woods. They could satellite there, just networking with the seniors. And the city still has, and our agreement with them can use it for city beneficial things, so.
Okay, I haven't done this for a while, but I'm going to do this tonight. Trivia.
We were just talking about it, that it disappeared.
Okay.
Okay.
What year was C C E T formed? Columbia County Economic Team. You know it, Dale?
Oh, who?
JR?
It's in the packet.
I know. I read it. Two thousand and eight. You're pretty close.
Two thousand and seven.
I just looked right at it.
You just looked at it?
I just looked down and there's a number.
Yeah.
I thought it was right around the flow.
Two thousand and ten.
Oh. I thought it was right after the flood.
I was in the packet. Oh.
Nineteen eighty six was close then.
Now.
That's pretty hard when you got a little date in there. You should say like, what's the third word of the fourth paragraph on page seventeen?
Yeah.
All right.
That's pretty close, JR.
I thought about your little trivia thing.
John didn't either.
Yesterday or today?
No, I haven't, but, um, we do it in March, March.
Thanks. Get ready.
Something else in here that says two thousand and eight. You'll have to reread it.
Okay.
Some reason.
Give you a ministry report.
Okay, so, uh, got a call from the seniors. The Corian was butted right up to the stove top and so the heat transferred and they got a pressure heat crack in the countertop by the contractor. I didn't know Corian could get heat cracks, but it can. Um, so they're going to come and basically roto zip a channel in between the stove top and the edge of the counter so that heat doesn't transfer that way and fix the countertop. Um, and then we're still waiting for a plumber to come that works with those nobleware dishwashers, because there's a certain adjustment that needs to happen to the pressure coming into the dishwasher so that their warranty won't be voided. So we're waiting for a couple of the people that have said they work on that type dish dishwasher as technicians, because you have to use their kind of person. Um, generator, we're still searching for the regulator. I actually called Felton's and begged them to give me a specification so I could try and source one, um, because that's taking way too long. I don't know what's going on or they're just busy and no one's sitting at the computer trying to source it. I don't know what the holdup is. I even, they were doing some, um, annual maintenance in the hatch right outside my office. And when he came down from the ladder, I'm like, are you here to do the regulator? And the guy was like, what? Kind of freaked out. No, he was not here to do the regulator, so. Uh, class of sewer project, the work up there by, uh, Matt Peel's company is complete. Uh, we still have a couple of things to do. We have to pour the channel in the bottom, which is a concrete, uh, job. So Jonathan's, they got to pack that stuff down, that embankment off fifth, which is going to be really fun. So that's what they're doing this week. Um, and then they're going to do the process of decommissioning the old line, basically. We talked to Mr. Seapley. He would not like us to pull it out of the ground. He said when they do development, they'd rather do it because he's worried about us pulling it out of the ground and just tearing his property up. So he said he'd rather wait and when they build something there, someone will run into it and pop it. So that's fine. We'll just plug it on the, close off the manhole side and then close off the other end and everything will run down the sixth, fifth, fourth manhole new, new section. Um, there is some work to still be done, um, by the city, which will be rocking the right of way areas and cleaning up some bark from where the logs were decked, um, and some kind of big clods of dirt. But it's also mucky right now that we don't want to try and get in there with any equipment because we'll just be making more of a mess. So I've talked to Ernie, who's the most affected by it, on the back of his property at Fifth, and he's fine with waiting. Um, he's like, I'd rather have it be nice and just put up with it for right now. Um, so they'll be doing that once the soil dries out a little bit more and they can get in there and out of there without showing everyone where they were. Uh, the Weed Avenue storm upgrade, the contractor is moving ahead with that install. Um, he's anticipating to be done by the first week of March, which is that twenty eighth. We're hoping he's got it drivable by the twenty eighth or then the food bank will just have to shift how they offload their freight. Um, and then skate park, they're cruising along. Um, I received the lighting plan, so who knew? But there's a lot of detail in where you put lights in a skate park, because you don't want them to cast shadow. I've learned a lot about this in reading all these things. Um, so they have that seven poles will be there. Seven LED poles, because you light the exterior and you light the interior so there's no shadow overplay. Um, I called the manufacturer and then the local rep to say, what's that going to run me a pole? Because I have no idea if it's within our budget or what. They just specked out an LED, uh, basically like a twenty four foot pole um, with an LED head and we'll just see if we can afford to put them all in. And if not, Angie and I'll look for somewhere we can fund it and come back to you guys. Um, so they're doing that. And then we're looking also the complexity that they specked out for the bases. While Chris did do the reader board, board base with the tying all the rebar and doing all that. Um, I'm going to like contact a couple of local guys like Swart and see could they, what would they charge to prep the bases? So that for efficiency's sake, I'm not pulling two of my public works guys off of all the other stuff I have them on look to do and slow them down with putting in these bases. So I'm going to see what the poles cost, what someone like Swart or some local contractor would do the base construction of the basically Sono tube, right? With, uh.
Rebar.
Rebar tied off and J bolts that come up through it. Your face, Dale. You just did the weird.
Talking to Reader Board?
No. No, I'm talking about the light pole. Chris did our.
Yeah, no, I.
To the engineer's design, but it's not something he does regularly. So to do it right, it took him a while. So I'd like to, for efficiency's sake, if we can afford it, get somebody to just put those bases in for me. So I'm working on that, but I just got the plan today, so we're, we're working. Um, then the windows still march is the plan for fixing those. Um, you guys had asked at the last meeting an update on the water purification connects. Um, so they have that. They're working on securing it to the trailer. And then they're working on the documentation of the transfer of property from emergency management to us. What we're looking to do is once the commission signs off on that, we assign whatever to take ownership of it, that we're going to get it here and then we'll do the training on how to run it at a later date. He's like, it's easier to move people or have us go there and learn how to do it on their unit or something than wait and not bring it here until we can get the training. We're just going to get it on site, secure it on our property and then do the training after that. Um, planting at Ora Bullmire, we're going to Albany tomorrow to, uh, Seven Native Oaks Nursery, which is the nursery that has forty six trees we have to pick up, so. Um, we're going to, Tim's, Tim said, I, well, he tried to say, I will not plant after March first. And I said, Tim, when they get here, we're planting them, but we're going to get them planted before that. And then I did order, so Counsel Webb might be able to speak to this. Um, you want to share with the good news of what happened at Ora Bullmire? Because it's kind of, we're in Ora Bullmire planting and.
So Randy Holt's got a whole day and said he wanted to donate some trees for Ora. And, uh, so then when he went over to the Small Woodlands Association, they had a bag of cedar that they thought was short. So they said, Eric, just have this bag. And so Randy calls me, he goes, well, would you guys want those cedars? And I go, yeah, we plant them in the lower half and you plant your, he was doing, made one bag, which is a hundred trees on the upper half. And so anyhow, he ended up, Randy just paid for the whole works, except the contractor may, uh, be donating his labor to plant the upper half. I planted the cedars in the lower half and then the extras I took down to the mill and planted where we needed some trees, so. So, yeah, kudos to.
Yeah.
He holds for donating, uh, getting the trees in and, uh, but the deer on those cedars are just.
Yeah, I guess.
Oh, man. Days later and I go, I know I planted a tree in this green spot. Where is it? And then I look and there's just a twig sticking up. And they're pulling them out. Because I haven't got enough rain to get the soil to suck down. And they're pulling them out because they haven't got enough rain to get the soil to suck down around the roots. They grab them, they nip them off, they pull them right out. I put three back in today that they probably won't survive because once their roots are out, if they get dry. But we're going to.
Yeah. I ordered the rigid sleeves.
Yeah. But we only had a handful of them and so.
That was nice of Randy and nice of you to plant them.
Yeah, so I have thank you notes, huh?
Everywhere I go, I keep seeing these little pink ribbons where he's been.
Yeah, yeah, everywhere you go.
Charlie and I are out there in the swamp running around.
Oh yeah, he's leaving his mark.
Pink ribbons all. Mostly just seed growth, but.
Every one of them is a tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't see where we planted any. Is that, or do we even plant any out in that area? It looked like all just natural stuff coming up, but.
Yeah, some places, I mean, some didn't survive its places.
Yeah.
I don't know if we planted everywhere, so.
There's quite a few out there. I mean, you start.
Yeah. It's surprising. Every time I go out, I find some new ones too.
Well, and we were walking out there and we, we walked out to look at them and I looked down and I'm like, well, there's one right there. And it was just like nestled in, everything was around it and it was like hiding. I'm like, don't move all the stuff, the deer don't get it. But tied a ribbon around it.
Deer seemed to bother them as much down on the mill site. I gotta go down and look at the cedars. I don't know. But that bag that he thought was only like sixty, I ended, the next day it bugged me. So I grabbed my counter and I went and counted and documented. So I knew what I planted and it was like, I counted ninety-five and I could have missed five trees. So I'm not too sure they didn't give us a full bag. So when Randy heard that, he said, he just sent us the money for the cedars. And he said, the county, Small Woodlands, the guy said, well, you paid me for those cedars. And he's, he said, no, that was pretty much a full bag. He didn't realize that, so anyhow.
Well, the deer probably appreciate you flagging their snacks for easy.
Oh, yeah.
You know what's weird? Have you noticed if the pink ribbon deters them? Because I've noticed, I've been watching the same one I'm driving by. There's like the same three and they have not touched the ones with the ribbons on top. It's almost like it must flap in the wind just enough for them to go, eh, not worth.
Try scare tape instead, they're like.
Yeah.
Put a motion sprinkler. Motion sprinkler.
That'll be the summer.
Right.
I don't know why they're hungry. My wife's using a bag of apples, it seems like every three days.
They pulled down. I was saying that the fertilizer that they put the seedlings in gives them so, you know, how they just come out and they're just this great, there's so much value that they go right to that thing that just came out of a nursery because they can sell about the nutrients.
Randy was telling me they're actually, they're doing something now in the nursery. They're putting something in with, I don't think it's like on the trees, it's something that they're feeding them.
Yeah.
It's actually is a deterrent. And he says, the cedars this year didn't have them, but he said, next year they will.
Yeah. Probably will save them so much time and effort to not have to sleeve everything if they don't have.
Yeah. Because I've been kind of looking at the firs that they planted. I did see one there today that got nipped. It was right on the deer trail, but the others, they haven't, they haven't looked at those near as hard. Those cedars, just about every one of them now has been nipped a little, so.
Those dang sleeves can't come fast enough. So the other, and I'm, we are writing thank you notes to the, to Randy and Small Woodlands and the contractor. If I can get the name or.
Yeah, well, Randy, he did, he's waiting for the bill because it was, this guy just.
A sub out.
He just spun off the other guys.
Oh, okay.
He doesn't even know he's in this shit.
Yeah. And then the other thing you guys asked me to look into was that I didn't get on my report, but I saw it in my notes, was the whether or not we could do Plexiglas on the reader board.
Oh, yeah.
I did get in touch with Shay, who sold us the reader board. And that model, you can't put anything covering the front of it because the heat, it traps the heat of the diodes in and then it voids your warranty. So, but he said, once you fit installed, make, get it on your insurance inventory because insurance should pay for a technician to come pop the dead diodes and replace them because that's how they damage it. You'll see those when you drive down and there's like a gap of one color. It looks like a TV or something pressed it too hard. He's like, you can take that pattern, pop out those diodes and replace them with working ones. So, but he said, get on your insurance and then insurance should cover it. So that's what I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do. Have you heard anything about the FEMA lots being recorded yet?
No. I can get on Sarah about that. County council, I don't, every time I, because I called her all through COVID and it was, oh, we're working from home and it's like, it's not important to them or something, so I'll get it.
It bugged us for so long.
Yeah, well.
That's when code enforcement started sending letters.
Right.
Were we holding, dragging our feet because they added a couple properties you weren't sure of?
Well, there's the one property, which I found out from community action team because they actually do it for the energy, for the feds, they can't also do it. But they did give me a name of someone to do the testing because we, there's two properties that could be put up for sale by the city. One has a structure on it that we'd want to make sure it doesn't have lead or asbestos before we agree, before council, I wanted council to agree to take it or not. So yeah, let me call Sarah and see if, where they're at with that and then get that testing done by the other agency.
Two properties you mentioned would stop us from taking the lots that we've already.
They want to do it in one lump sum. They want it, right now that list includes those two properties.
Okay, so they're just going to come back and say, we're waiting on you then? Because we're waiting on testing, right?
No, yeah, so I asked Sarah, last time I asked her, can we pull those out while I investigate it? And she said, no, the county wants to do all of them at once. So that's where we're at. So I can push for that testing now that I know that CAT can't do it because they do it for the feds or whatever.
Since you're writing stuff down, I haven't got the report or maybe I've got it. I'm not on my government email right now, but the smoke testing report was supposed to be all put together. We're going to see. And then I still haven't heard anything about my property as far as somebody coming to explain or do some camera things. So I wondered if everybody else has got done and then we're going to give people deadlines and nothing's being done as far as this is what you need to do.
So the smoke testing, I don't, I'm not following, what do you mean, put together?
There was a report and you said, well, we're not done. I mean, the pictures and stuff, then we're going to distribute it.
Yeah, I can have Chris send that. Because they gave us a report and then he had his own data that was in there.
Wasn't it Chris, you said was going to go around to the homeowners and, because he was there or something, explain everything to people?
Well, so that's the thing, we're working, we're working on basically the form letter that, hey, an issue came up at your blah, blah, blah property or your cap has got a problem, right? And then there's only a handful of them that are like your house where it's an unknown, right? And that's the ones where we were going to go visit those, I think it's seven properties, if I have it right, that had some weird anomaly that we couldn't just say, oh, it's a broken cleanout or it's, this cap's missing. We have to figure out what to do on the lower streets because like A, North A, and I think B, all their cleanouts are in the alleys and the majority of them are just covered with a cinder block. So it was something, I don't know, but they're all that way. So it's like, it's like a shorty cinder block as the lid. And I don't know if it's because they, it was that way, it would spew out it.
I was wondering if we were having fountain issues there a long time ago or something.
Something, yeah, but I can get them to, we can get, bringing that back to you guys.
At my place, I don't know if you're aware, there's a manhole. It's only like fifteen feet away.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm thinking there's, it's just smoke going through the cracks of the manhole and finding a gopher hole or something, but typically you don't tie in a lateral close to a manhole.
Yeah.
So I just was hoping they'd come do a camera thing and said, there's not even a lateral here, so there's no issue.
Yeah, so that's one of them. Those are the ones he'll just have to investigate and then we'll probably, as staff, figure out, okay, this is what we can offer, right? Because you're, whatever we offer, we're going to have to do the same for everyone in the seven to be legitimate, right? So figure out what the seven have as variables and figure out what our stance is going to be when we go visit those people.
Okay, anything else for the city administrator? Okay, moving on. Thank you, Joseph. Moving on to mayor and councilors.
Any councilors that we need?
Yeah, this meeting.
I got one thing.
Okay.
I ran into Ken Bateman. Did a haircut and conversations about all kinds of things and, oh yeah, you have the right of way there on Weed Avenue. Yeah, I don't want it. Does the city want it? Well, we might. And he goes, well, I'd like to really make a deal with them. I have no use for it really, but I would like the street paved up to Springboard or Fairway or whatever. And I'm looking in here, it just is a city street, right? Up to that point.
It's county, isn't it?
Ah, that's private.
It's private. Yeah.
I believe where we looked at the spew over with the manhole, JR, is the end of the city streets.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, but the city property goes, the city limits is further on out, right?
Yeah, so city limits goes all the way out to Fairview Lane, all those homes.
Anyway, if you're interested, he was definitely wanting to. See if he can make it a swap or sell it to you or some pavement help or something. Anyway, he was more than willing to just come talk to me. So I thought I'd mention it.
Okay.
Yeah, it is kind of weird. He's got it on his, it might be on ownership map, I'm just looking at function map.
It's on the jurisdiction map.
Yeah, he.
Private.
Private.
I mean, I don't know what that right of way would be worth.
Well, and then I wouldn't want to do any paving ahead of this CDBG project because there is the potential, they're looking at a couple of different ways to deal with the sewer. And one option is they come back down to Springboard, they come back to Weed with a new line and they come back into the system and totally eliminate the one going through Weller's Field. And then do a pipe upsizing at Adams and the pump station right at Anderson Park to force it. Because one of the issues we're running into where it is in Weller's Field is it's right on the edge of a wetland and there's not enough fall and there's a section of the pipe exposed. So it's got issues of why we want to avoid it. So I wouldn't want to pave Springboard before we bring a sewer line back through it, up to Spring. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, I didn't realize that it was such an issue up there. You told me we got people that bought property up there and they can't build a home or get hooked into sewer. They've been told no by the city of Burnonia and they bought a lot for like eighty grand and some nice guy wanted to build a home there and he's like, well, no, we're not giving any hookups, so.
Well, I haven't ever talked to that guy because every person we've talked to is allowed they have to go farther to hook up than they would want to.
Oh, I thought.
It's not an immediately, you know, they're going to have to go to the main, which could be two hundred feet from their property.
Oh, it's just cost prohibited, maybe.
Maybe it's that.
Oh.
Yeah, and it just depends on like, some people are like, call and say, oh, we're thinking about buying this. And we're like, well, just so you know, if you buy this, we're upgrading the line and you're going to be, you could hook into it, but you're going to be required to also hook, rehook into whatever the line becomes because we can't, so it might have been.
The story I got was he was told, no, just, we're not letting anybody hook up to sewer.
And he owns property there?
Yeah, and I think Ben's name come up, but I don't know for.
There was a time where that was the answer. It was no, but now we're doing the Springboard projects. Our, it, every scenario is different.
Yeah.
So I can't speak to that one.
Yeah, I don't know who that would have been.
I don't know.
The ones that own now.
I think it's around that Springboard development.
Yeah. Well, and. There's a couple of them where the guy owns a section of the right of way or there's right of way and then there's his property. There's never going to be a road.
It's just a different.
So he had wanted to vacate that so he had a more flat spot and then, so there's a lot of scenarios up there, JR. When the Brett, when the.
Right, right.
The Brunsmen, when the Brunsmen's got divorced, that property went piecemeal to him and her. She lowballed and sold her stuff quick. He held on to his stuff a little longer. And so we were talking to people, probably twenty people a month that were looking at their properties for sale and trying to, so I don't know who it was, but.
I don't know either. It was something that.
I believe anyone that owns there now, we have communicated, they can hook up to the main now, but they'll re, have to reconnect closer to their property when we do the project.
That was some part of it. I was hoping this whole thing changed all that, which.
Oh, yeah, it will. Yeah, then you could, and, and basically whatever we're doing to the upgrade to the ones that come down that go through Weller's Field now, those will be upsized to take the full build out, right? Where right now it's a six inch pipe and it's got Roseview Heights and it comes down and it's got Springboard and it comes down and it goes through Weller's Field. That pipe needs to be bigger, even if we put in new manholes because all those lots could be potentially built out and we need to plan for that. So that's all part of that Springboard CDBG design.
How's that going? We're designed and done or?
Oh, no, we're not done. We just had the agency virtual meeting. So basically Robert, the engineer, presents the design and what they're planning on and ODFNW, DQ, Upper Naleam Watershed Council, Division of Land, State Lands, all the agencies are there, Army Corps, they're all telling us what permits we have to get for their specific agency based on whatever's happening. So we went through all that, so it's going well. I mean.
We were in design by the grant, if I remember right.
We're in the design, that's what the grant, current grant is for.
Apply for the funding.
Construction, but it queues you up. When you use their money to design, you're kind of in the queue for them to fund your construction.
Hope so, huh?
Yeah, and then next Wednesday, we're meeting with our engineer and Maggie to talk about the Adams Street culvert. So when that pipe gets relocated or bored under Bear Creek, what's the box culvert? And it's kind of starting the funding with Upper Naleam Watershed Council so that when the pipe gets decommissioned, the new box culvert goes in. It's all kind of happens at the exact same time so that we aren't driving over a steel plate longer than we have to.
So the Springboard design thing, I know it could probably take a while, but what's the best case scenario and when could you, like if it was done in July?
The dream would be that we would be able to apply for the next construction round.
Which is?
In July.
It's in July, through, what, July through September window?
Yeah, I think it's July. I'd have to, don't promise, don't get married, but I think, I think the end of August is the deadline.
The best case.
I think it's a sixty day opening.
That's the goal, right?
That's the goal, is that we'd be through all of the steps and flushed out enough in the design that we could, they could make bid documents with all of the exact things with the ad alternates, if we went this way or that way, all of that, so that we could go. If you're at a certain point, you can apply for the construction funding without having your bid documents ready because they're going to have a sixty to ninety day process by which they're picking who gets the funding, right? And so then you still have their sixty to ninety days to keep working on yours because we're going to do it anyway, even if we have to go next round. And if we don't get funded in this cycle or for some reason something happens, but it won't happen, and we miss this cycle, we would be applying in the spring of twenty-three.
Okay, well, thanks for that update. That kept my head kind of, you know, I hear Springboard and it's just kind of something that's been.
Oh, yeah.
Be out there, right? So.
Yeah, and I think it's going to be kind of, I'm excited Ken's willing to come to the table. It's going to be a weird, it's a weird deal where the railroad grade, they own it, so it becomes the street where we own it. I don't, I'm going to have to get people that make a lot more money than me to help me figure that one out. Because I don't.
Well, historically, we haven't accepted roads like that unless they meet the city standard, like Rosie Heights.
Yeah.
Well, it wouldn't be a road, would it? We would just call it a right of way and on a road.
No, but where it goes private, it is a road. All those people are, I mean, and it's, needs help. I don't know who's driven out to Fairway, but my daughter has friends out there and it is pothole city.
We don't have to do that. If we're interested in it and they. We don't have to do that. If we're interested in it and they would take a nominal amount for it, they can do whatever they want with the money and we can have the right of way if we need it. I don't know if we need it, but.
Yeah, so typically people just like dedicate those. There's not a ton of money in it, like the one on Alder that we had where Gwen's owned a weird half section of Alder and Alder was like neck down to 20 feet on this side, but it's really whatever, 60 feet. Those just get dedicated because they're just paying taxes on it, but we'll see.
Yeah, I didn't know what we were going to need in the future to fix our sewer issues.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
Well, and ultimately, I, I think that road needs help, so. For the future of the citizenry that live out there, we should, you know, take a hard look at it, but then figure out what would we need to upgrade it and use that maybe to not have a huge price point also because we're going to have to put a ton of work into it if we're going to make it. I mean, there are sections of it. If you have a low car, you're bottoming out.
I haven't been down it a long time.
Yeah. And then you turn onto Fairway Lane, is it Fairway Lane? And that's not that bad. But the rest of it, oh my goodness, especially when it was snowing. I went to pick her up out there when it was snowing and I was like, what the heck?
So how do these roads get private when they're in the city? I mean, they just build them themselves and they say, you own it or, I mean.
Yeah, or it was a private development.
Yeah.
Down there.
Right.
So someone subdivided their own property, built that road off of the city's road and then sold lots, right?
Was never made to, up to a design standard.
No, because usually that happens before we take ownership of it. Or like in my subdivision, we had to go back and chip seal or asphalt another lift before the city would accept my subdivision road. Because they came out and graded it and were like, mm, we don't like this or this, another lift please. And then the owner of the subdivision does that and the city takes it in to maintain it forever. They just never did off that lot.
Started and was done in the 70s.
Right. Before, I mean, I mean, and we didn't, my road was the 90s, like late 90s. So the tide had shifted a little and people got a little smarter before they accepted roads, I think. And no, they didn't really care to want it accepted out there. They probably still don't want Fairway in the city as a city road because it gives them some freedom. There's, you know, code enforcement's not driving down the right of way because it isn't a right of way for us. You know, you can park your whatever, wherever. You just deal with your neighbors, so. Just like Locker.
Yep. Oh, God.
Really got some holes in that one.
Right. Those are purposeful, though. Someone's doing that on purpose.
Alright, okay. Alright, go ahead. So, uh, plant trees, there's an end goal. And I've been doing a little hiking around some of our timberlands. And actually has fire. The stuff up around the cemetery, still pretty young. Probably the next 10 years, we need to probably be thinking of doing a little management in there. Buy some thinning and stuff, re-lease to get it grow. Some of it's pretty dense. There might be some opportunity. I noticed there was some cedar in there that pie was left by the last contractor that was pretty small. So now it's getting better sized, cedar's got value, so. You know, whenever we do have somebody go in there, probably do some cleanup.
Take a few cedars out.
Yeah, take out those cedars.
Pay for some of the thinning?
Well, yeah, because you got to have some pay logs in there. Otherwise you might have to pay them to do the work for some of that. I mean, it's going to depend. Well, and we'll have to time it, you know, if there's some good pulp prices or something like that right now, I don't know if you can give pulp away, but.
Is that property pretty steep in there or?
It is not as bad as I thought. No, yeah, as far as developed and I think that could all be developed. You know, I mean, there's, there's some steep draws.
They were talking geological slides or something.
Yeah, I know, and that's something we'd have to have somebody look at, but I I, I, I was surprised. It wasn't near as steep. There, there's a and it was interesting because I talked to my dad, and I think I told you. It was Evie. It's a convoluted deal, but anyhow, the fire department ended up getting the DA. And so they used the DA up there to punch in all the roads. There's actually, they punched in, there's, there's some pretty nice roads going into, I mean, it's dirt.
Right.
Summer, it'd be summer times logging. But there's, there's cat roads all through the right, right off from the cemetery, behind the coal barium, looking to the north. If you just walk through that patch of timber, you go out on a real nice, uh, high cat.
I thought our property was down to the right, or is it actually right behind?
So we own.
Oh, we own, we got some big acres all the way up around.
Oh, there's two sections there.
This is that of the city limits.
Yeah.
This was the one we were taking out because of the draw.
A lower 20.
Yeah.
Out of the urban growth?
It's all the city limits.
It's out of the city limits. Remember, we are doing the swap.
Right.
Yeah. That's the one that had the draw.
20 acres.
That development.
That was.
That's 20 acres.
So did you get cleared out into that one too?
Oh, yeah, I got all the way down. I was, uh.
Behind Roseview Heights or whatever.
Yeah, I was in behind Gilbertson's house. So, you know, and Kirk Potter there on, uh.
His second.
Second. Yeah, there's, there's cat road. Well, and I think there've been a few people that have been using those old cat roads because they were pretty open for as old as, they're 20 something years old, 21 years, I think we figured.
Yeah.
No camps in there though.
No, didn't find much.
ATV trail.
There was a lawn chair back there somewhere. And something else I found, we didn't.
Somebody that wasn't playing video games found an ATV trail, huh?
Yeah.
I think there'd been a little hunt going on. But anyhow, so I mean, that's on our future radar. Probably the one of the things, probably for this, the cemetery actually has a woven, a woven wire fence kind of perimeter around it, kind of. It's hit and miss.
Opening spots.
Which is probably what the city is, that cemetery ground. And, you know, there's those big firs all kind of ring around it. There's a few that are on the outside edge of that, which probably we would maybe clean up. That, that's just something that would need to be discussed. Uh, there's, there's a pretty nice patch of fir going up to the cell tower road there. It's kind of off of the cemetery, outside of their fence, whether we want to take them or not. And then again, we need to watch if there's any dead and dying. Once we start doing management up there, we need to start watching for these trees. The other thing is once they get too big, you start losing value. You get up to 32 inches and.
You're sipping them south.
Yeah, they don't want them as much. You lose value, so. So there's just, there's just a few things we probably need to kind of put together, start thinking about. She's got a lot on her plate right now, so I mean, that's just a future project. Maybe we do a subcommittee or something.
Yeah.
Pull some people in to help us with it. But we own property up to the old dump. Well, there's two parcels in there. There's, there's a six acre that runs east-west, basically. Kind of parallels Snoke Road. Gwen's own right next to the road, kind of the line kind of diagonals off. That didn't take real good when it was replanted. It's pretty, well. I don't know what it's out there because you can see where the old, you used to, there was a slot in the ground that you, we used to dump in up there. That was the last where they dumped. And that's pretty open. Nothing grew on it. And there must have just been trees there before, but it's pretty scattered stand, but there's some nice timber in there. I think, I, I'm going to go up and put some tape on them, see just how big they are, but I, just with my hand, I'm looking. Some of them are coming up to 28 inches, chest high, so.
That's the outside, huh?
It's probably time to take those out. We're growing a pretty good patch of vine maple in there in spots. Probably just time to, to log that and, and get it reforested and, and a new crop and a better crop coming. And then where the old dump that faced over toward the river, we're, we're growing small growth, blackberries in that area. And you can tell where the dump, it's not growing much, but there is a couple of little islands or some pretty nice trees. And right at the top there, right by Mrs. Odom's house up there. There, there's merged timber right there, but I got over down below, there's a ridge in there that runs down to David Weller's place. There are some dandy timber standing down there. I haven't got right down there hands-on to it yet because of the different property ownership to get to it, but just looking down there. I know Dennis mentioned when he was logging down below, he said, well, you guys should take your timber out. You know, this last minute, we weren't ready to do it. But I think he, I'm going to talk to him because their timber right, butted right up to that and see what he was getting. But I'll probably get permission to walk in there, look that patch over. It looked at me, there's some nice slick timber in there. We figured there's about six acres there. There's about 12 acres of logging up there that needs to be done. I think it all could be done. Depending if we can get access into that ridge, it could be done with a ground machine. But if we get landlocked, we might have to cable yard the bottom six acres. Which would eat up some revenue.
30 loads in there?
You know, I haven't put a number to it yet, but it's pretty, that patch down below is pretty thick.
Just nice timber. It could be 20 to 25 loads. Oh, yeah, I imagine.
Oh, well, when did we get off? We got 20?
Of the Everts? Oh.
Was it 26?
Yeah.
I think, and I guess now, it was 26 loads up there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're, we'll be way over that.
Way more.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But we're just going to thin it a lot.
No, the, the dump stuff you would take.
I, oh, yeah, okay.
Have.
I think it'd be clear cut. I think it's time to.
And both those property owners were like, we'd love to have the view back.
Yeah.
So we're like, awesome that you don't have to fight them.
Yeah, I was kind of, you know, I was talking to Mary Ann up there and I was kind of walking on eggshells because, you know, you start talking logging right next to somebody's house, you know? And she was like, my dad used to be really mad at the city. Why they'd come up there and cut them trees and said, I wanted to see my view, you know? Her dad lived across from her there.
Yeah.
And anyhow, and I said to, so you wouldn't mind if you had a view from here? She was like, oh, yeah, that'd be great, you know? I was like, okay, that sounds good to me too.
That'd be looking down on.
Down below the airport.
Uh, looking, it's 47, that's our house.
Looks direct down on like Fudge's Field almost, Timber Junction, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Almost down my parents' old place.
Yeah.
Probably see it from there, but.
Yeah.
It might be more.
It looks a little bit more towards like Sullivan's, right?
Yeah.
That way than back towards Allen's.
You can probably see.
There's a crossroad.
Five years old yard out there or office or something.
Yep, yep.
So I don't know. Look, I'll try to get in there.
Well, we used to sit.
Hands-on.
Bender's house up there, right?
Poked some trees.
They had a good view.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's growing up now, but.
But we should, you know, we need to kind of start doing a management plan on over timber because even down on that patch, I mean, I can see there's some that are down, which we're just losing.
Which area, cruise it with, yeah.
Well, and that's the thing. That's what, when we made the timber fund, it was to use those funds to manage the timber that we have.
Yeah.
So granted, the fund's smaller now, but we still have some money to, to get that cruising or the kind of plan started.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that, that crop and not even all of it is what it seems now, built this building and the library when they, when they cut it. So if we can leave it as a better crop for the future, that, that's a good setup for, for a kind of check for council, like, yep, left it better than we found it.
Got the 20 acres in, paid for all that?
The, uh, it's the 60.
Oh, all of it up?
It's, it's, no, the 20, I don't know that, did they log that the same, the lo, the long rectangle?
Dad said there was two different times. Evie logged up on top and then.
Logged later.
And I think that, and then peel, and I think they just logged more right up on top, right around where the towers are.
Yeah.
And that's what I told you. I seen, it looked like some timber was a little bit older.
Right, the age, yeah.
And then.
So I don't think they took all of it to build these buildings. They took a portion of it. But if you can, if you can plan it back and get it growing, I mean, timber doesn't grow faster anywhere in the world, right? Is about the say, saying that they say.
The same clear cut, cut twice now. I'm getting so old around here.
Right? It is a little weird. You're like, oh, man.
Wait for you turn to go to the airport park. So on the left there, I remember that being logged when I was a kid. Teenager or early, well, probably teenager, and then now it just got logged again.
Yeah.
Starts to make you feel a little older when you see it cut twice.
Michael.
Thank you, Dale.
Oh, and then one more thing. Sorry. I worked on, I inadvertently worked on the deer euthanization project.
Oh, okay, good.
I got a phone call, well, the wife got the phone call and then she called me and friend of the family down at Fairview Lane. And had a deer that was pretty much non-responsive down there. So went down. And yeah, I mean, it could hardly raise. It's a little fawn. Really bad shape. Not hair loss, though. It just like had the scowls really bad. It was just, it was a mess. And so anyhow, I pulled my state police card out and called the dispatch and got ahold of the trooper. And trooper says, well, I'm going to, he said, don't kill it yet. You know, I'm going to get ahold of the biologist.
Oh, geez.
But I was amazed. Actually, it took 15 minutes time I called dispatch to get a trooper on the line, a call back. And then it was probably five or eight minutes after the trooper hung up at the bio co. And this was on, oh, maybe it was, oh, it was Friday, Friday late afternoon, which is amazing.
Yeah.
And anyhow, he asked me a few questions and, but I did mention to him, I said, well, you know, I said, this, you're kind of my test case here, how well this works. And I said, we're, as a city, we're talking about trying to get somebody designated or maybe several people designated to do this, you know, to streamline this process. So I said, we had a deer here that was hours waiting for somebody to come dispatch it. And so, and then I, and I told him about what we even, because he goes, are you going to shoot it? And I go, no, I'm in the city limits. I can't shoot it. Well, how are you going to kill it? And well, I'm going to use a, they have a split mall right there, right there by their wood pile. And so, oh yeah, that'll work. But I said, well, maybe putting up screening if we're close by people so they don't have to watch it or see it.
Yeah.
First kids. Oh, that's a good idea. So yeah, actually this district biologist, well, lamont valley district biologist, which was kind of odd, but he seemed supportive of that idea. He says, that's a good idea, you know, we could do something like that, so. And he was, you know, thanked me for taking care of it. It took a half hour.
Did he, did he, what did he think of like a bolt gun?
I didn't, I didn't ask you.
Because that might be something, even if we just, you know, not deputize, but like identify the person, get them the, the equipment.
Right.
Even if it's like easy screening that just goes up, right? Something that they could have. If they're willing.
Their reservation on this, because he asked me a few questions.
Yeah.
You know, about the condition and what if that happened. But he was like, well, is it bleeding from either end? And I said, no, but what he's hitting at, he's wanting, he's, he's checking to see if there was disease, you know, hemorrhagic fever.
Sure.
Something like, because if, something like that.
Then they want to.
He might want to come pick it up.
Yeah.
Get, take it to the state vet.
Right.
Because they want to know about that. So I think. Cause they wanna know about that. So I think, you know, maybe I could take this on, call, call. ODF and W. Maybe we could agree to a checklist.
Right.
Of things. If we're seeing this, then we call you. I mean, by statute, we have to call them and notify them.
Right.
That we dispatched the animal.
Right. But if it's a car hit animal, different than something that's not moving, it's looking like it's lethargic. And it, nobody saw any trauma happen to it, then that's something they might go.
Yeah. And if you're seeing this.
Yeah.
You're seeing this bleeding.
Right.
Then maybe you might wanna call them, but you know, if it's just one that's mangled up from a car, you know where it came from.
Yeah. No, that'd be awesome if you're willing to do that.
Well, anyhow, I mean, it was, I was amazed it worked as quick as it did. Uh, yeah, when a trooper told me, oh, don't kill it yet. I was like, oh shit, here we go.
The hours waiting for someone to come take care of this poor thing.
Yeah.
So do you have somebody available twenty four seven, holidays and everything? Because you go to Fourth of July, try calling a state agency.
No, if it had been a weekend, that would put a two in the morning, two o'clock.
And that's the thing. I think we just develop with them something they're okay with, that they know we're, this isn't. Every Tom, Dick and Harry running around with a gun, shooting deer they think are suffering.
Yeah.
But I think if they're willing to do that, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
And then we can kind of have a known policy or procedure for it. And then we could network that person with the police. So even if it was, you know, get an op, if there's an officer on duty, get them to come with you. So they're your witness that you did it per the policy or something.
Well, it'd probably come down to us being notified by dispatch that there's something that needs to be done. And then us following up with whoever's going to.
Yeah, yeah.
Doing that dispatch. So not only are we notified of it, dispatch was notified of it, so.
Yeah, it's documented.
Yeah.
If you take a video, I'll bet.
Yeah.
Video tape with your phone, how bad a shape the thing's in or something.
Yeah, and I did take a couple of pictures and sent to him, so.
Well, yeah, and that's the thing. You wanna really stop that kind of herd disease or infection. Or whatever could be happening. You don't want that running rampant if. All their procedure, so.
Yeah, cause then they might need to be burying an animal and stuff like that.
Of course, a lot of these poor deer are getting in our yards and then they're, um, they're eating the grass after, um. And people have animals in there, and so they're getting worms. And you know, there, you don't know, there's one or two worms that, that was, we had some sick deer around our house and. Like, well, it's either one or the other, and you know, it's hard to tell and you can try treating it. It's just a.
You can dose them like Webb does. Just put out the salt, like with a little something on it or an apple. Right? Kill worms them.
I seen some, some young deer last year and they were just so skinny and hair was coming off.
Yeah.
And they had the runs and it's like, I think we even called, tried to talk to somebody and they're like, oh, they probably got worms from, from the animal. Feces in yards or something. And it was like, oh no, and then, you know, my wife's about ready to pack them to the vet somewhere, you know.
Don't do that. Just get Julie whatever he.
No, it passed away late, finally, it just laid up against our house and I found it in the morning. I had to hide it from her. It's just a little.
Well, and typically if they make it through the winter, sometimes they make it.
It didn't make it through the winter.
Oh.
But you call these people and it, it won't do a damn thing. With birds hit the window and like a hawk and, oh no, we don't, we don't, we're not gonna come. You call the auto monster side, oh no, we don't.
I, I've driven birds to the auto monster side.
We're not coming to Venonia to tell.
Yeah, well, Nicole Lark had a, what was it, an eagle?
Eagle.
Yeah, she took and then she got to be part of it released or whatever.
Coming home the other day, there was an eagle right there by gasoline alley. I don't know if there's salmon in the creek or what, but it come out of the road. I, I was thinking of Nicole as I was hitting the bricks.
Right, don't hit it.
For an eagle, but they didn't wanna come out for a hawk. Called the Oregon Zoo and talked to people.
They've made me, I, they, I had one guy met me at McDonald's in North Plains. The other times I had to drive all the way in.
Oh, wow.
So they, they'll come out if they're available.
Yeah.
Come out and do the release, is they supposed to be released in the same area they were.
Yeah. Well, that's awesome. That'd be great. I think if they're willing to let us do it and then it's humanely done and we're not like. My thing where my kid's looking out her window for four hours watching the deer under the tree, that's still not gonna survive.
I'm surprised someone didn't just walk out there and, and dispatch it without waiting, but, you know, four hours is a long time.
Yeah.
I think.
It's a long time.
And the biggest concern is the discharging a firearm within the city is serious.
But what about the bolt gun? Because it doesn't actually have.
Doesn't, doesn't fire anything. You're probably fine. It's not, it's not shooting anything.
Well, I mean, you grab a, you know, an axer or less.
Split mall was a little overkill, but.
Little, well, those are good knife will take care of it.
Well, and that's the thing too, is I've seen, we were heading out of town, uh, by gardeners. And there's a guy standing on the side of the road and we pull over and we're like, are you okay? Do you need help? And he's like, you got a knife? He's like, this poor thing's suffering. Somebody had hit it in front of him. And we're like, sorry. And he's like, someone will have one. Don't worry. We drove on and he, yeah.
It's a blunt, uh, heavy object to the head. It's, it.
Yeah.
Really quick.
Yeah.
The only bad thing is you get a doe or buck down in the hindquarters, you need something a little longer, cause.
Yeah.
You gotta get close enough to hit them. Those front hoes are wicked, so.
Yeah.
And you got kids looking out the window screaming, they're Santa Claus beating the hell out of a deer.
So anyhow, I'll, I'll work on that, see if I can.
Awesome.
Do something more.
Hazen Campus good to, for a presentation on the seventh?
Oh, the first meeting in March. Awesome.
So if we can add him, that would be great.
Anything else before, ready for an action item summary? For an action item summary?
Okay, so, let me look here. I don't have very many things. Wrote on it. So I don't have anything specific other than staff's gonna let, uh, Mr. Strickland know that he's been appointed to the planning commission. We're gonna schedule the camera proposal. And that's the only things you have to do, unless I'm missing something.
On the county properties.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, that's on this page.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, oh, okay, sorry, I'm wrong. Uh, have, send out the smoke testing cl, combined report to council. Um, with all the information in it. And then talk to Sarah at the county and get the testing done and talk to Bateman about weed. I was missing a page. It was hidden behind the rest of it.
Okay, do we have a meeting on the twenty eighth? Any workshops?
Um, I have to look. I don't know. I have a.
That's a week from tonight.
Oh, oh, next Monday?
Yes.
No, no.
Okay. So.
Next council meeting will be.
The seventh.
The seventh, right.
Yep.
You have a council meeting on the seventh and then you have a March ninth work session for police with the sheriff.
Yep.
Okay. Our first budget meeting again, remind me the.
April something.
Yeah, I wanna say.
Of April?
Yeah.
Oh.
Like the twenty. I think it's the twenty sixth.
Oh, oh, okay. That's, that might be, that's maybe go in the first week of April or something like that.
Usually the very first ones, the passing it out, the first few funds we're gonna talk about, getting the books out to everyone.
I think you're the next person to pick candidate of the month for March.
For citizen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then who? Then me or you?
You wanna adjourn?
I, I don't know. I think it's you and then me or.
I lose track.
I can get, send you guys the list of what the order is, and then I can also send you who's been selected already.
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
I thought I was like, would be great. And maybe I'm April.
I'll let you know. I'll send it to you guys tomorrow.
All right, all right, all right. So we'll adjourn the meeting at nine forty. Meeting adjourned.